Well, now I'll call our October County Commission into order. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Chantel Serino to come forward and introduce our Chaplain of the Day. And then he will lead us after the prayer. He will lead us in our pledge to the Tennessee flag, United States flag, and the Tennessee flag, in that order.
Good evening. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce the Buddhist interim head monk of the Buddhist temple in Murphy's Bow on Neshville Highway. Prakay Kes Suli Sak, his name, was born and raised in the southern part of Laos, Japasak Laos. He went to school, elementary school and secondary school in Laos. And then later on, he become a Buddhist monk and went to the National Institution for Religious in the capital, being in Laos. He went to the further school and got the education. And when he came to Murphy's Bow, Tennessee, he got the congregation invited him to come and join in teaching the Buddhist temple in Neshville, Old Neshville Highway. The congregation, a member of over four, I mean, over 500 people. He was so happy to get, receive the invitation from the commission, from the mayor. And he's leading the prayer today by including happiness, good luck, prosperity, and for many years of achievement. And he been leading in the language we call Pali Sanskrit. Now it's turn.
Please, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on the field of blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. Thank you. All right, reading and approval of the minutes. Roll call. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Gammon?
Here.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Here.
Commissioner Kush?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Gurley?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Gammon?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Commissioner Sereno?
Here.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to conduct the business of the County Commission for the October meeting. Reading and approval of the minutes. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. Catherine, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order, with the exception of two or three typos that didn't change it at all, and I move that they be approved as presented.
Have a motion to be approved as presented, and a second. Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution recognizing Rutherford County's reward schools. Commissioner Rhonda Allen. You're recognized, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite Superintendent Spurlock and all of his guests to come up and join As Mr. Spurlock's approaching, for those of you who don't know, 75 cents of every Rutherford County tax dollar that's spent is spent on education. It's the most important and worthwhile responsibility that we have as a commission is to invest in our educators. And so tonight, we're having an opportunity, let's start a row over here. Tonight, we're having an opportunity to recognize some of our most successful schools. And although every school, I'm sure, has success stories to tell, these folks were recognized among an elite group in the state. So I'm gonna let Mr. Spurlock introduce his guests. I'm gonna let him speak to you for just a moment or two about what this means, and then, then I'll read the resolution.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor, and your staff, and the commission body. We do appreciate this. We don't take this for granted. We are looking at our 15 reward schools tonight that are being represented. A reward school is our schools that have, are being the 10% of all schools in the state of Tennessee in achievement and/or growth. This is unheard of for a system as large as we are. You know, we'll also tout the fact that we currently have a 95.6 graduation rate with the fourth largest district in the state of Tennessee. And we would like to thank you, commission body, for funding our schools. We do not take this for granted also. But let's go on and recognize those that are with us tonight. First of all, Barfield Elementary, we'd like to thank their staff and their principal, Mrs. Goodwin. Blackman Elementary, their staff and Mrs. Ford, the principal. Cedar Grove Elementary, their staff and their principal, Dr. George. Smyrna Elementary, and their staff and their principal, Mrs. Patton. Last Cassus Elementary, their staff and their principal, Mrs. Blair. McFadden School of Excellence, their staff and their principal, Dr. Blair. Stewart's Creek Elementary, and their staff and their principal, Mrs. Turner. Stewart's Creek Middle, and their staff and their principal, Mr. Murray. Blackman Middle, and their staff and their principal, Dr. Coniffy Marlin. John Coleman Elementary, their staff and their principal, Mrs. Brown. Igaville School, and their staff and their principal, Mr. Tollitt. Thurman Francis Arts Academy, and their staff and their principal, Mr. McCann. Rockville Middle School, and their staff and their principal, Mr. Barlow. Is anyone from Brown's Chapel here tonight? Well, we want to recognize them anyway, and their staff and their principal, Ms. Goosetree. And also, we have with us tonight, recognizing their staff and their principal of Central Magnet School, Dr. John Ash. Thank you.
I hope you all are as proud of this moment as I am. All right, let's go ahead and begin. Let's go ahead and begin with the resolution. The Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations that consistently have a positive impact on the people and communities of Rutherford County. And whereas the teachers, administrators, staff members, students, and parents of 15 Rutherford County schools were recently honored with the top distinction a school can earn in the state of Tennessee by the Tennessee Department of Education. And whereas these schools were named reward schools, which requires that they have a high accountability score and be improving in academic achievement and growth for all students and subgroups. This was the first year that Tennessee implemented its new school accountability model, which was developed with educators and stakeholders across the state, and which looks at multiple measures of success. And 318 schools in 85 school districts received reward status, about 20% of the schools in the state. And whereas the Rutherford County schools who earned this honor are as follows. Barfield Elementary School, Blackman Elementary School, Blackman Middle School, Brown's Chapel School, Cedar Grove Elementary School, Central Magnet School, Igaville School, John Coleman Elementary School, Last Cassus Elementary School, McFadden School of Excellence, Rockville Middle School, Smyrna Elementary School, Stewart's Creek Elementary School, Stewart's Creek Middle School, Thurman Francis Arts Academy. And whereas these schools proudly represent multiple communities and a third of all Rutherford County schools, and now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this legislative body extends this resolution of recognition to the 2018 Rutherford County Reward Schools for exemplifying our community's commitment to provide outstanding opportunities for our students. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion and second? Commissioner Dodd? You're recognized.
Okay, and a second on, any comments?
Seeing none on the resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. So proud of you. I appreciate you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Come on in. Give me a hug.
Next on the agenda, we have the resolution recognition for 25 years of service by the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officer, Commission Chairman Pettis Reed. Chairman Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask at this time that the resource officers that are here to come forward, as well as the sheriff. And while they're doing so, I think it's just very appropriate. We just finished recognizing the administrators of our schools for the outstanding job they are doing, and then we're coming up next week to Safe School Week across the United States, and right here in Tennessee, and right here in Rutherford County. You know, 25 years ago, we began our SRO program due to the efforts of county commissioners before us, and some that are sitting here tonight. And I think, Mr. P, I think you were involved in that, and the beginning of that, making the motion, I think, when they were selected, when we began SROs right here. So this is a very important part of safe schools within Rutherford County. And we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize those individuals who are looking after our children, looking after our staff that are out there in these schools, and taking care of the most precious, I guess, I started saying commodity, and I guess they are, when you consider it to the families out there. When they open those doors and let those children go into that school, they're giving them to us to look after. And these individuals right here are making sure they're safe right there. So I wish to read this resolution. Whereas Rutherford County was the first county in Tennessee to initiate a school resource officers program in conjunction with Rutherford County Sheriff's Office and Rutherford County Schools in the 1993-94 academic school year. And whereas the primary duty of school resource officers is to ensure safety for students, faculty, and staff in every Rutherford County school. And whereas school resource officers teach classes to students and counsel with students and parents. And whereas school resource officers are trusted by students in their roles at schools. And whereas school resource officers support children in athletic, academic, and extracurricular activities. And whereas America's Safe School Week focuses on school safety to maintain schools free to violence, weapons, and drugs. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we hereby recognize and commend the Rutherford County Sheriff's School Resource Officers, especially during America's Safe Schools Week, October the 21st through the 27th, 2018, for their commitment to ensuring safety in Rutherford County schools. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion on the resolution and a second by Chairman P and others. Any questions? Seeing none? All in favor of the resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chairman. Before you all leave, let me, let me just say one other thing, Sheriff. Thank you for what you all do. I know it's been trying on you all, some of you, especially the SRO officers. I think everybody, all the schools were in cold yellow for the last couple of days from the escapees, but you made the arrest today, and our community will breathe and sleep safer tonight. They'll feel comfort. I know you all probably need some sleep. And not just our Sheriff's Department, but all law enforcement officers from across the state and outside the state. I think we had federal marshals that came in from other states, TBI, FBI, Blue Lives Matter, and we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you've done in keeping our community safe. Thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you. Before we go to the next item on the agenda, I do want to recognize we do have Leadership Rutherford class here. They're required to, they've been all over, and looking at how government operates on the backside of the curtain. And so this is their night for several of them to come and, and get their cards signed, but hopefully this will be a good experience for you to see how government actually works. So if all the members from Leadership Rutherford, if you would, please stand, let's, let's welcome them. I was just informed that Junior Leadership is also here. Anybody from Junior Leadership, please stand? Look out, Commissioners, there are people standing behind you, ready to step up and take over, eh? Thank you for coming tonight. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. Any public comments? Seeing none? We'll move into item I, Elections and Confirmations. Vice Chairman Robert Stevens, Brad Turner, Chairman. Vice Chair Stevens, you're recognized at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Collect our notaries.
Our first item under elections and confirmations is to elect notaries. You'll find on your iPad a list of those, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that those notaries be approved.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Turner. Discussion, seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Need to announce three vacancies on the Agricultural Committee, announce a vacancy on the Community Care Board, announce a County Coroner vacancy. Next, we need to fill two Commissioner vacancies on the Audit Committee. You'll find your application and recommended by steering or Commissioners Joe Gurley and Robert Stevens, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion. Second by Commissioner Dodd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we need to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Steering recommends Mr. Joe Michoto, and I would make a motion for his approval.
Have a motion, second. Second, Commissioner Phillips. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we need to fill a vacancy on the Records Commission. Steering recommends Commissioner Michael Rather, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for his approval.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Piercy on the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we need to fill two vacancies on the Beer Board. Steering recommends Mr. Leslie Smith and Mr. Keith Bratcher, and I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Irvin on the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we need to announce the reappointment of Mr. John L. Beatty to the Consolidated Utility District Board. And, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval of that.
Have a motion. Second, Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, we need to announce the appointment of Tammy Sharp to represent the School Board, and Keith Bratcher to represent the Road Board to the Audit Committee for a two-year term. And, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval of that.
Have a motion, second. Mr. Trento on the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Vice Chairman Stevens. Next, we have resolution to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Chairman Phillips?
Catherine, I have reviewed that consent agenda. I find all those items appropriate, and be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that all matters listed on the consent agenda be and are hereby approved and adopted.
Have a motion. Second by Commissioner Rather. All those in favor? Sorry, Members, we need roll call. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Now, just lightly. Now, don't hold it, just lightly. Commissioner Jernigan, yea or nay? Yea or nay? Are you a yes?
Yes.
You're a yes. Okay, we got it. Thank you, sir. All right, we got it.
21 yes, motion passes.
Motion passes. All right, we've got five minutes till the public hearing, so we'll move on to reports by standing committees. Budget, Finance, Investment Committee, Chairman Robert P. Chairman P, you're recognized.
Let's see what we can get through before time's up here. The first item we'll look at is item M1A. This is a resolution to provide funding for a employee that is retired. Increase in, excuse me, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. This is under the county mayor's budget. Increase expenditures for assistance, $9,150, and associated benefits for a total decrease of $9,875. Under the Sheriff's Department, under unassigned fund balance, $1,114, and increased expenditures of $362 for contracted services, and other supplies and materials for $752. And these are for reimbursements for donations from the greenhouse and the memorial garden from the prior year. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, second by Commissioner Allen. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. It's a roll call. Roll call. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Everybody cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
21 yes, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Item M1B is a resolution from Solid Waste. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Solace Waste Fund be amended as follows. From the convenience centers, an increase expenditures, contract for private agencies, $20,000, with a decrease in the assigned fund balance of $20,000. This is actually for a crusher for open-top containers. Next, we have a increased expenditure for fencing for $65,000. Also, increased expenditures for site development, $257,000, and a decrease from a assigned fund balance of $322,000. This is for Leanna Convenience Center, and also used oil grant expenses. Other waste collections, we have increased expenditure, other contracted services of $36,800, and a decrease in the assigned fund balance of $36,800. And this is for glass, plastic, and single-stream disposal fees. Lastly, in this, the landfill operations, we have increased expenditures of equipment, machine parts, $7,000, and a decrease in the assigned fund balance of $7,000, which was for a backhoe repair. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Piercy. And discussion? Commissioner Piercy.
Not that I'm trying to help Mr. P do his job, but the $20,000 for the crusher is just services rented for. We're not buying a crusher or anything. It's a contract agreement. Is that not right?
That's correct, Commissioner. Thank you for the clarification there. Anytime y'all have a question on something going on here, I'm new at this too, so we'll work through it together, but I appreciate anybody's input and help. We continuing, or time's up?
Now, hang on just a second. We got a motion and a second before us. Members, ready to vote? Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk. Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. We'll reassess Chairman P., and it's time for our public hearing. Call on Planning Director Doug Demasi, if you would come forward. Mr. Demasi, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mayor Ketchum and members of the commission. We have one rezoning application for you tonight. This is for property located along Burntob Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property to light industrial in order to operate a land clearing and utility line maintenance company. The information that the applicant has provided, along with a concept plan, can be found on your iPads. For the new commissioners, you can find that under the public hearing tab. Materials submitted by the applicant indicate that he also removes chip materials from the land clearing operations, regrinds them on-site for materials for mulch, soil products, loam, and sells them at retail. His business is family-owned and currently has 10 employees. Additional conversations with the applicant indicate that he has typical hours of operation from Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with occasional weekend hours. Equipment on-site would consist of chippers, grinders, dump trucks, pickups, and like-type material. Again, the concept plan and the submitted materials from the applicant have been included on your agenda packets on your iPad. Access will continue to be from Burntob Road. The concept plan on your iPad does show a loop driveway for easier access for larger vehicles. There is significant truck traffic along this stretch due to an existing rock quarry located right across the street from this property. We would view any access or potential traffic improvements during the site plan review phase, and that would come if this application were to be approved. For landscaping, light industrially-zoned properties are required to provide a type-three buffer adjacent to any properties of their zone for single-family purposes, which pretty much surround this site. Most of this site is heavily treed. Existing material can be used for that buffer. Again, this would be confirmed during the site plan review process. And parking and maneuvering areas would also require landscaping consistent with our ordinance. There's also performance standards in our ordinance regarding noise and vibrations and things like that, that this site would also have to adhere to. There wasn't much discussion on this item at the planning commission's meeting. Some of the commissioners did have questions regarding septic soils, traffic along Burntob Road, possible future improvements to Burntob Road, questions about buffering, and also operations of the site. One resident did ask during the public hearing how far it was to the city-owned property where there's a proposed park, which we answered about three-quarters of a mile. That satisfied the gentleman who spoke, and he sat down after that. After the public hearing, the planning commission did vote to recommend approval by a vote of eight for, none against, and two abstentions. The two abstentions were due to the fact that the steering committee was going on in Room 205 at the same time the planning commission meeting was going on, and when the two commissioners came in, they already had the public hearing, discussion was over, they basically came in and sat for the vote, and neither one wanted to vote just because they hadn't heard the discussion. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing no comments. Now, we'll open it up for public comments. All right, seeing none. We're going to close for public comments. Mr. Gooch.
I move for approval with staff comments.
Got a motion for approval, staff comments, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Phillips. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Now, we'll come back to Chairman P., if you'll come back up, and we'll go into general-purpose
As you're following along, this will be item M-1C. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general-purpose school funds be amended according to the schedules attached heretofu as Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion on the general-purpose school fund budget amendments. Is there a second? Second by Irvin. Commissioner Irvin, second. Any discussion?
I'd like to, before we get into that, to mention Exhibit 1, I'm going to go ahead and read it, and it's actually a motion to amend the general-purpose school budget for the additional $1,306,923 in Tennessee's Safe School and School Safety Funds that the system will receive this year. Other state funds account 46590, and the related $1,306,223 expenditure for safety equipment account 72620-107 as presented. Exhibit 2 is also the other motion, and that is to amend $34,250 from account 34585, restricted for capital projects. $18,900 from account 34655, committed for education. $22,325 from account 39,000 unassigned fund balance, and a $30,000 donation to the related $105,475 in general-purpose school fund expenditures as presented. You'll find that on your iPad, I believe. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Without objection, we'll take all those amendments, and second by Commissioner Sorrento. Abjection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Everybody vote, I'm sorry.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Item N-1D, this is the transactions of the recent bond issue that we had. We have a decrease in assigned fund balance of $1,307,371. Increased revenue of bond proceeds of $355,031. A decrease expenditures of debt issuance of $100,000. Increased expenditures of principal $1 million. Interest on bonds, $407,321. Underwriters discount, $207,231. And other debt issuance, $147,800. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Chairman Turner on the second. Abjection. Record a vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Item M-1E, be it so resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the educational capital projects fund be amended to complete the following projects. Central magnet roofing, HVAC paving, Riverdale High Roofing, Oakland High Roofing, and Walter Hill Elementary windows. And this is remaining from the 2016-17 and the 2017-18 fiscal years as follows. Decrease committed for capital projects, $1,542,888, and increased expenditures for maintenance and repair buildings of $1,542,888. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion from Chairman, and a second from Commissioner Allen. All members ready to vote? Madam Clerk, record a vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
This next item, many of the older commissioners have seen this before. This is where we have some energy-efficient school grants, and this is item M-1F. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires the Rutherford County Commission to enter into a loan agreement with the Energy Efficient Schools Council in the amount of $1,282,842 for a term of three years at a rate of 100 basis points to finance energy management systems in 15 Rutherford County schools. And whereas this loan was made available pursuant to TCA 4917-101, and whereas the rules of the Energy Efficient Schools Councils must be followed concerning eligible projects, loan repayments, and reporting requirements, among other things. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the state of Tennessee of Energy Efficient School Councils relative to the loan agreement pursuant to TCA 4917-101 in the amount of $1,282,842 for a term of three years at a rate of 100 basis points. A copy of the same attached heretofu is Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim for the purpose of financing energy management systems in 15 Rutherford County schools. Resolve this 15th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Allen.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item M-1G, and this has to do with the FEMA and SAFER grants. Whereas Rutherford County has received notification of a grant award from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and for the 2017 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. And whereas the federal award is in the amount of $1,771,146, and requires a match of $1, 100,979, and covers the performance periods of 12/1/18 through 11/30/21. And whereas the award is for 15 firefighter positions, salary, and benefits with grants funding of 75% in year one, 75% in year two, 35% in year three, and zero thereafter. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to sign the grant award documents with FEMA, and to accept the 2017 SAFER grant in the amount of $2,872,125. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to reflect the revenue and expenditures of the grant for the remainder of the fiscal year. Increased revenues, other direct Federal Reserve, $376,839. Increased expenditures, $327,093, and that's in salaries and wages. Other benefits, and that will total $114,804. Insurance, disability insurance would be $654. Medicare, $4,743. Unassigned fund balance, which is a decrease of $125,613. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Commissioner Harris on the second. Commissioner Harris, you're recognized. Question?
One of the things that I'm concerned with is what happens in three years. And I'd like to have a discussion as to, though I think this is great for our county, but I also am concerned with what happens in three years when we don't have any money coming in, and we have all these new employees. So I'd like to at least open up a discussion of that, and that's my concern.
I can make a short answer for you, but don't assume to be able to answer all of that. But basically, we're going to end up with about a penny added to our base tax rate. You know, a penny now is 900 and something thousand, isn't it, Lisa? It's going to be close to a million dollars a year liability that we'll be picking up by picking up these firefighters. And not only that, we'll also be looking at a place to base them. You know, we're looking at something long-term here. You know, like I said, there's other people that are much better able to answer that, but to give you a quick answer, you know, you're looking at one cent basically on the tax rate.
Commissioner Stevens, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've cast a very polite no against this proposal in Budget Committee for the same reason that Commissioner Harris raised. First off, when the money's gone in three years, if we don't get the grant again, then we're going to have to absorb that cost into our budget. And it can't just come out of general fund balance. There's a very limited pool of money from which this can be funded, and it's called our SITAS tax, which is primarily funded, which was about 80, 90% funded by hotel and motel tax, which incidentally comes out of Murfreesboro and Smyrna City Limits. And nobody has convinced me yet how it makes sense to take money out of Murfreesboro and Smyrna's hotel and motel tax and fund a rural fire department. I understand they do some work in the city limits and so forth, but it just seems odd to me that we're doing it that way, and I voted no on it years ago because of that. Now, when the money's gone, if you vote for this tonight, you're voting to commit us to this spending in a few years. You're going to have to either vote to increase the tax rate to pay for it, or you're going to have to lay off 15 firefighters, and politically, that's never going to happen. So I'm really concerned about what happens when the money does go away. Our fire department's great, our sheriff's office is great, we have amazing people here that do things, but the mayor said this is a gamble at the Budget Committee meeting when I asked these questions. If you take out the emotions, take out the personalities, and look at this on paper, I wouldn't gamble like this if my personal finances are in my business, and I certainly wouldn't want to do that with someone else's, not knowing where the money's going to come from. So when it comes to funding salaries with free money, just remember, free money is very expensive. The next few budget items are one-time expenses for gear and equipment and so forth, and that's one and done. We don't have to worry about coming up with that money next year. But when we're committing ourselves to salaries and benefits, free money is very expensive. So just keep that in mind if you vote yes on this tonight.
I have Commissioner Reed, and then Commissioner Gurley. Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
Commissioners, if you remember, all the way back to, I believe, 2010, I believe, is when we first began dealing with this. Am I not right, 2010? We went through the same process. We did it by grants to get those first firefighters. You mentioned the fact of a rural fire department, and when people hear of that word "rural," You mentioned the fact of a rural fire department, and when people hear of that word rural, they're thinking about something a whole lot different than what we have today. We currently have two full-time fire departments, one on the north side and one on the south side, that are second to none. And they not only answer fire calls to just rural areas, as far as what you're thinking about, they don't go out and put out fires just at barns, or houses, or whatever. They're also your only source that when anything happens out here on I-24, eight forty, they answer all those calls. When you're talking about the city of Smyrna, Commissioner Stevens, you go home tonight, and you have an accident in the city limits maybe, or just out there on I-24, out there on I-24, we will answer that and come to you as the first responder. So it's important to remember all the other things that they do and what they're involved They are vital to this county, and what we're looking at right now, we are a growing county. And when people come to this county, you know, you sit here and think about, yes, they're coming to Murfreesboro, they're coming to Smyrna, and they're coming to Vern, but they're also looking at our rural areas and places to put these homes. I serve on the Planning Commission, and it's not, we meet twice a month, and I think Mr. Demossi can tell you back there, that every time we meet, we're looking at about a hundred, sometimes up to two hundred, and all the way to four hundred plats out here in the county of people building homes, places to live within this county, that they've come here expecting something for them to protect their homes. We're right now sitting in a situation to the west out here that needs more fire protection, right now, absolutely, right now. You talk about a penny, and that's what we operate by, is by a penny. And you know, if Abraham Lincoln knew how hard we squeezed these pennies, he wouldn't have wore that top hat, because it'd be a lot taller than what it is when he had that first one he put on. And we do squeeze it, but when I think about a penny, it reminds me back in school when I had to learn a poem, and that poem was, "For the want of a nail, a shoe was lost; for the want of a shoe, the horse was lost; for the want of a horse, the rider was lost; for the want of a rider, the battle was lost; for the want of the battle, the war was lost; for one of the war, the country was lost." And I think about that penny. That penny is so vital to so many of our county constituents out here, and it's very important, I think, to our rural fire protection that we have here. Three years, I don't know what it's going to be like in three years. I really can't tell you what it's going to be like in three years. And every budget period I've ever sat in right here, I've heard us start here at this very same point, and say, well, hell, that's going to cost another penny way out here. And then when we get to that point right there, that's when we know what it is. But gentlemen, this is our opportunity, once again, to make this fire protection we have just a little bit better. Mr. Chairman.
I have your Commissioner. Commissioner Gurley, you recognized?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with Commissioner Stevens, there is a very limited category of funds that we can fund this from when this grant runs out, in about two and a half years, three But I had a meeting today with a developer who's going to build several hundred homes in my district, not in one of the municipalities, but in the county jurisdiction. And, you know, we're going to get, that density is going to be urban-type density, it's not going to be a house on five acres. So we're looking, I'm sure those people really expect to have fire protection when they move in here. So I think, you know, I spent twenty-seven years of my life in public safety. Commissioner Reed's right, the town of Smyrna does not respond on I-24. So if you do have a wreck on 24 tonight, it'll be the county that's out there, not the town of Smyrna. Now, they will respond within the city outside of 24, but not on I-24. So that coverage that is provided on a day-to-day basis is needed. And I think probably somewhere down the road, that we're going to have to look at a fire tax. We're going to have to really explain to the citizens, if you want fire protection, then it does cost. And there's no fairer way than to tax the people who are receiving that service. And there is a benefit to that, from that, for the citizen, and that's your ISO rating goes down significantly. And guess what? When your ISO rating goes down, your homeowner's premium goes down. So I really think it's something that we can sell to the citizens in the next two to three years, and I see that as the fair way of providing the revenues for a fire department. I think we're two stations, fire stations, short of what we need to be right now, and about four EMS stations short of where we need to be right now. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Commissioner Allen, you recognized?
I'd like to share some comments that I shared at Budget as well. And also having served on Planning Commission for a dozen years, I see those subdivisions, you know, come through twice a month. And being the Chair of Health and Ed, I can tell you, for the last, I don't know how many years consistently, we've added a thousand students to our school system every single year. A thousand students triggers a school. So we're going to be faced with all kinds of growth issues, and this is definitely one of them. It was about twenty-five years ago, urban growth boundaries were established for municipalities. And the idea behind those was that you could clearly identify who was going to, what cities were going to grow into which areas. There was recently a change at the state legislature, and what they did is they made it more difficult for those cities to then begin to annex areas into their municipal area. So what's happening is, these neighborhoods that are coming to us for approval are in many times the urban growth boundary, which would have been absorbed by a municipality, but no longer are. But they are at the same density that they would have been at had it been a municipal neighborhood. And so the challenge then, this is one of those unintended consequences, is that now as a county, we have a responsibility to provide services for those residents. So this is the situation that we're in. You know, my comment back to saying, why would you take the money from Smyrna to pay for this? You know, that'd be like a family who doesn't have children telling me they don't want to pay taxes for schools, or me telling you I don't want to pay for the roads that I'm not going to drive on. You know, we're all in this together, and so we have to look at it that way. So I would encourage you to vote for this.
Chairman P., you recognized?
Well, having been on planning, and also a volunteer firefighter for many years, one thing I will point out, Joe said this was kind of in the future, looking at different funding, but as of right now, Chief Farley and his group have lowered the ISO rating already in many parts of the county to class five, from a nine. I was, have been a member out at Ketchikan Fire Department, and we went from a nine to a five. And when we did that, I had calls from people thanking me for the amount of money they were saving on their insurance costs per year, and it was somewhere between five hundred and eight hundred bucks for most of them, some a lot more, depending on their property. So, Mr. Commissioner Harris, I actually border you in part of our areas, and one thing that they've changed is a lot of the rural commissioners now have districts that go into the city. Used to, when they rezoned us, we were basically kicked out of the, or we lost our constituents who were brought into the city limits, and we were kept rural. Well, now, I've got a mixture, and many of you sitting there probably got a mixture of constituents that are both rural and municipal. So my thoughts to you is, or to us, is I think it's the best thing for all of us to do, to pass this, so that we've got assurance that we've got the capacity to take care of these people out there. You know, just because I live a mile outside the city limits, doesn't mean that I need to be ignored, or my needs to be ignored. But that's everything I've got to say on it.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Harris, if you had any other questions that maybe I can help you with, if not, I mean, we could probably suspend the rules and ask Chief Farley to come up if you want to question him, but...
I'll go to Commissioner Percy next, and then Commissioner Harris, if you'd like to speak.
I sat on the Public Safety Committee last time Chief Farley brought one of these requests, and I believe we worked it through...
Commissioner, hold your microphone up just a little bit closer. There you go. Thank you, sir.
I believe we worked it through. The hotel motel tax, we raised that enough to cover the last fifteen firefighters that he got. I heard the mayor make the comment the other night, there's at least two more motel hotels on the books now to build, to be built, and we're looking at, what, Lisa, three years before the penny will have to be added? Is that close?
Director Nolan.
Okay, I just remind you that it's, the funding is seventy-five percent, seventy-five for the second year, and then only thirty-five for the third year. So we'll probably be addressing some of this in the third year.
Commissioner Percy.
Where I'm going with this, we paid for the last set out of raising the motel hotel tax. There's going to be more tax left on the new motels and hotels that are built. At the end of the three years coming, Mr. Farley, if he's lucky enough, he'll be back up here with another grant, because he'll need them by that time. Three won't do it. He's running the entire county right now with two full-time stations, and they're running their tail off. You know, he goes from county to county, interstate, he's doing a whole lot more than two stations really should do. With that said, I will have to support this also. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris, you recognized?
I think Chief Farley is great. I do. I believe that. I believe that we're growing. But I'm also concerned with what happens in three years. And I know it would be, but I'm not ever going to race against him. I don't think you might as well do it here, would you? So I'm not saying anything, or I'm not saying that I think we are very relevant here. I'm just concerned about three years. That's all, that's all I was going to say, but it's...
Yeah.
I mean, I'm lucky, Bill.
Other comments? Saying none, we have a motion before us. Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Nineteen yes, two no, zero abstain.
Motion passes.
Item M-1-H, this is actually another grant that awards us money for smoke alarms. Whereas Rutherford County Fire Rescue has been awarded the two thousand and seventeen Assistance to Firefighter Grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, and requiring a five percent match in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. And whereas the Fire Rescue will be used, will use the grant for the purchase, promotion, and installation of free smoke alarms to low-income and disabled citizens of Rutherford County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to accept the two thousand and seventeen Assistance to Firefighter Grants from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, and requiring a five percent match in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, for the purchase, promotion, and installation of free smoke alarms to low-income and disabled citizens of Rutherford County. And additionally, that this general fund, that the general fund be amended as follows to recognize the proceeds from the grant to appropriate said proceeds. Increased revenues, other direct Federal Reserve, one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Increased expenditures, other charges, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Decreased unassigned fund balance of five thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Resolved this eleventh day of October, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion from Chairman P., is her second. Second by Commissioner Gammon and Commissioner Irvin. Mr. Gooch, you recognized?
Just for public understanding, my question would be, how would the public apply for one of these detectors? What process would they go through?
I don't have the answer. We can suspend the rules and ask Chief Farley...
I believe that we suspend the rules for Chief Farley.
I have a motion to suspend the rules. Got a second by Commissioner, Chairman McAdoo. Move to suspend the rules, Chief Farley. Approach the rail, please. You're recognized.
And we've been giving free smoke detectors away probably about for four or five years. The State Fire Marshal's Office has a grant where they buy millions of smoke detectors. Right now, we are, actually, you can go on the county website and fill out a form, and it sends us an email, and then we get the name, address, and location. We call, make an appointment when we come by, and we install them ourselves.
Now, I'm sure that local social agencies throughout the county, you would reach out to, to let them know about this service. If they're offering services to someone, they would be able to refer them...
Well, part of this grant also pays for advertisement, to get the word out, but what we'll do is, we'll take a couple of weekends, and we'll have target, where we target certain areas that have low income, and make, and go door-to-door, and knock on the doors and ask them if they need smoke detectors. And the good thing about this, too, we have detectors that, for the hearing impaired and deaf, and what is, it plugs in, and it's put up under their pillow, and if it detects smoke, it shakes the pillow to wake them up.
About how many detectors do you anticipate with this grant, roughly?
Five thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions? Are the rules suspended? Saying none, we'll come back out of recess and back into order. Other questions on the motion? Cast, record a vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Our final item is M-1-I, and this is also a grant for personal protective equipment for volunteer firefighters. Rutherford County Fire Rescue has been awarded the two thousand and seventeen Assistance to Firefighter Grants from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars, and requiring a ten percent match in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And whereas the Fire Rescue will use the grant for forty sets of personal protective equipment for volunteer firefighters. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to accept the two thousand and seventeen Assistance to Firefighter Grants from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars, and requiring a ten percent match for... of Homeland Security in the amount of $118,146, and requiring a 10 percent match for the amount of $11,814 for 40 sets of personal protective equipment for volunteer firefighters. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to recognize the proceeds from the grant to appropriate said proceeds. Increased revenues, other direct Federal Revenue, $118,146. Increased expenditures, administration equipment, $129,960, and a decrease from unassigned fund balance of $11,814. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion by Chairman P., is her second. Second from Commissioner Piercy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all members cast their vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman. Next on the agenda, we have the Health and Education Committee report. Chairman Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is really a housekeeping item. The exhibit is on your iPads, if you want to take a look at it there. For those of you who don't know, Community Care is a long-term care facility that's operated by Rutherford County. And so, this is just a clarification. The lease terms say that they will, their employees, although they're not technically Rutherford County employees, that they will have access to some of our insurance and benefits. And so, our risk management director is the one who recommended that we clarify this language. So, that's what the resolution's regarding. Whereas the attached amendment to the lease agreement between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Community Care of Rutherford County, Inc., amends the lease agreement entered into by the parties on June 16, 2016, and sets forth an amendment as to the agreed to by the parties. A copy of said amendment to lease agreement being attached here, too, is Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length of, as if set forth in verbatim. And whereas, said amendment to the lease agreement is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the amendment to the lease agreement with Community Care of Rutherford County, Inc., resolved the 11th day of October 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Cook. Discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Signify, sing aye? All opposed? Resolution passes. Next on the agenda, we have Property Management Committee. Chairman McAdoo, you're recognized.
Good evening. At our last meeting, which was a real, very good meeting, we had some people to give an input to our previous plan of what we had voted on to do with the old judicial building and some of the buildings around it. After a lengthy discussion, we decided to go another route, or delay what we had planned to do. So, my first resolution is a resolution to retract the decision of selling the old coin and bank building for now and reevaluate it. Resolution. Whereas due to the election of a new county mayor and commissioners, there appears to be the need to continue the discussion of whether to sell the old coin building and bank building. And whereas, the immediate sale of these buildings does not affect other provision of Option 7A of the judicial building repurposing study. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to retract the decision to sell the old coin building and bank building and to reevaluate said sale. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018, and I so move.
Have a motion from Commissioner McAdoo, is her second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Gammon. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Signify, sing aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second resolution is a resolution to proceed with the architect's cost analysis of Option 7A. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate entities be and hereby are directed to proceed with the architect's cost and analysis for Option 7A to refurbish the judicial building on the public square. Resolve this 11th day of October 2018, and I so move.
Have a motion. Chairman McAdoo. Have a second from Commissioner Dodd and Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Chairman Allen.
I just want to clarify one thing. Normally with a resolution where there's, whenever there's the word "cost," we usually will associate whatever that cost is. The reason I was at this meeting, so the reason that's not specified here, is because this has already been worked into the contract. That's the reason that it's not specified separately. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we want to record with that.
Other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the resolution? Signify, sing aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Public Safety Committee. Chairman Reed, no report. Public Works Planning Committee. Chairman Gooch, no report. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Chairman Turner, no report. Any other business coming for us? Chairman P.
Just so we don't get out before everybody knows there's a resolution that hadn't been signed, it's been passed around right now.
Okay. If you haven't signed it, please, before you leave the chamber, please sign this resolution. It has to be signed by all of you, so don't forget that. Members, you probably saw this on your desk, some of you who saw this. This is a Robert's Rules of Order. Some key items, for those of you who actually attended the Tennessee County Commissioners Association meeting down in Henry Horton last month, receive this. Executive Director Charlie Curtis, who I served with in the House of Representatives, is now the executive director, and he brought by, he's done his statewide tour, and I thought this was a, he brought these by for all the members who could not attend and left them on your behalf. It's a good cheat sheet to know what Robert rules are, and the number of votes that it takes, how to properly go through the procedure. So, we thank for all of you members, I think we, don't we pay, Mr. Nolan, don't we pay for the membership for all the county commissioners to be members of TCCA? So, we, sorry that you were unable to attend, but for those who did already have received one of these, so we thank them for bringing it by after he's finished. So, do we have any other comments to come before us tonight? Commissioner Reed, Chairman Reed, you're recognized.
This is also the time that we get the opportunity, especially for me, to recognize the diamond on the horizon in the west. And Iggleville down that way, the Lions Club on November the 17th will be having their annual turkey shoot, and we invite everybody to come out and help the Lions Club. And to get you a little bit of practice, you can stop at the Ruby, the Ruby to the West, which is the Rockvale Ruettin Club, which will be having their turkey shoot. So, if you need a chance or an opportunity to get your Thanksgiving turkey, just come out my way, and we got you two opportunities out that way to get you a turkey.
Well, I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to go out and get them a turkey. They used to have chitlin' dinners out there, so, you know, I only went one time, and I had enough chitlin', so I liked turkey shooting better than chitlins.
Other comments, announcements coming for us? Chairman P., you got biscuits?
We got to talk about country ham. You know that.
Country ham. I know it's coming.
Unfortunately, there is not a country ham breakfast this Saturday. It's the next Saturday, the 20th. However, there's a catfish supper out at the Last Cassis Volunteer Fire Department. Since we're talking about fire departments, and I'm a big advocate for the fire departments, and as you can see, it keeps our costs a lot lower than they would be if we were having to pay for full-time firefighters everywhere. But the other thing I wanted to ask is, we've got a gentleman setting in with us. I think Lisa might be able to introduce him for us.
Madam Clerk, would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes, it'd be my pleasure. This is Derek Hunt. He is an MTSU student, and he is an intern in our office currently, and we invited him tonight so that he would get a better understanding of what we do at the county clerk's office, as well as what you all do as county commissioners and chairman of the commission. So, it's my privilege to introduce Derek Hunt.
Welcome, Mr. Hunt. All right. Commissioner Johnson, you're recognized.
Through the form, making sure everybody knows how conservative I am, my wife and I are celebrating our 53rd wedding anniversary, the 16th of this month. So, in lieu of a card, I'm going to wish her a happy anniversary, publicly.
Thank you very much, and I know your wife appreciates that. I'll have to, I'll have to follow suit, not as long as you, but mine's the 15th, 35 years with my lovely bride, and so, I'm surprised she's kept me this long, but I want to say thank you, Teresa.
Also, I'm available if anybody wants to go my bond with Sheriff, feel free to do that.
Okay. Other announcements? Commissioner Piercy.
I don't want to take any shine off of Mr. P.'s ham breakfast, but the Canesville Methodist Church is having a ham breakfast this Saturday. Starts at 6 o'clock, goes to around 10 or 11 o'clock. He was right, there is a fish fry at Last Cassis this weekend. It starts, it goes from 4 to 8 on Saturday. We have the gathering at Milton going on in the small community of Milton. They've opened one of the older buildings there, turning it into a venue and a gathering place. They're going to have crafts, foods, be a good time to spend the whole afternoon up there. I think it goes all day long. And Mr. P., I believe that's all that's going on in Last Cassis. Thank you.
But Chairman P. is glad of that, because he was going to have to cook biscuits for somebody this Saturday, and, you know, but now you can go to Canesville, right? Other announcements coming for us tonight?
Members?
Well, we can't leave Laverne out.
Commissioner Gammon.
If you can't make it to Last Cassis, Laverne's having a fish fry this Saturday, same time, 4 to 8. But we're pretty good ways apart, so if you can't make it there, just come to Laverne.
Location?
Laverne Rescue Squad.
Laverne Rescue Squad.
On Gamble Lane.
Other comments, announcements? Commissioner Gooch, you're recognized.
I was just handed this information about the sixth annual chili cook-off and cornhole competition in silent auction. Now, this will be October the 26th at the courthouse from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. There's going to be prizes. And I would like to ask, with all these ham breakfasts, are y'all going to have a pig shoot in Iggleville?
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. I believe that this is a United Way competition among all of our departments, so if you're around the square on that date, come by, there's going to be competition. I know our departments take it very seriously, and they get real serious about this chili. They're going to dress up in costumes. Bring your A-game on cornhole. I think there'll be some cornhole competition and prizes. I think there's going to be a golden spoon that will be the first. I believe Deputy of the Mayor Sandlin is kind of organizing this on behalf of United Way and all the different departments, and he's going to start a traveling golden spoon. So, whoever wins this year will get to keep it, the honor of keeping that spoon for one year, and that'll pass on to the next department next year. So, bring your A-game on both your chili and your cornhole. So, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. Any other announcements coming for us tonight?
Commissioner Gammon, we're back to Laverne.
Laverne's got a really great restaurant, I think everybody knows. It's tomorrow at lunch, I think, is that right? It's their last day, Omni Hut. So, if you can get down and support them, their last day. Am I correct on that?
I think I got a nod of that. That is correct. Omni Hut, it's a landmark, it's been here since, as long as I can remember. Been here for a long time. It's an institution to be closing, it's unfortunate. We'll miss Omni Hut for sure down in Smyrna. Other announcements to come before us tonight? Chair Lynn attended a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Signify, sing aye? All opposed? We adjourn.